And there is no consent agenda. So we will move to call to order and we have done that. We have our attendance, we have a quorum. But there are changes to the agenda. The, uh, there is a discussion item for a V Trans bridge tip amendment, and that will become second, uh, number three A. And then V S P, VP SP two update will be, uh, three B. And then we will consent, the equity training will still stay four. So if there's no, um, issues with that, we'll move on to probably comment for anything that is not on the agenda. Do we have any public here to comment on something that is not on the agenda? I don't see anything. So not seeing anything, let us move on to, um, the, uh, discussion of the V Trans rail bridge, um, tip amendment.
Yeah, lady, I don't know if you want to, so you got it, Lainey?
Christine is here, actually. I think, I think we should just let Christine talk from Germany.
Uh, so, um, this project is on the tip, is on the tip. It's for construction in 2023. So this amendment is just advancing the construction from 2023 to 2022. Um, it's a rail bridge project that is just a rehab project, not a replacement. So it's just, um, fixing the, the abutments. I think it's a culvert, not a bridge. Sorry, I misspoke, I believe. But, um, yeah, so it's just a rehab of the existing structure. It's on the critical path for Amtrak coming to Burlington. And so we're being asked to advance it. Um, there was a discussion at the TAC about some issues with water quality and the potential desire to do a replacement in this location rather than a rehab. And I, I think the point that was just made at the TAC is that the funding is not there right now to replace this bridge, to widen it and add, um, a greater clearance underneath the bridge for the, the, the stream, the river. And so it's really just a replacement at this time. Sorry, I hope that made sense, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
But will the, um, uh, V Trans eventually put the, the bridge on the, uh, their, their tip amendment? Uh, their tip, their stip? Do you have an idea?
I'm sorry, can you, I, I didn't hear what you said.
I, I just asked, will they ever, will they eventually put the bridge, a bridge replacement on their, uh, agenda?
You know, I think I, I, we have Amy and I don't know if Matthew's here. Um, if it, if it, I mean, eventually it probably will need a full, full replacement. But at this time, financially, they're just choosing to do a rehab.
Would you like me to add to that, Christine? I was, I was enjoying watching you kind of twist in the wind for a little bit there, but the, uh, estimate that we have, and this is basically repointing the culvert and doing some work on the head walls. The estimate for that work is a $588,000. And we have some old, um, Western Corridor earmark funds available um, that we can use formula, obligational authority. So they, these are FHWA funds that we can use. And that's why we chose to go this, this route. Um, when we scoped the project, uh, we looked at, um, doing this work, lining the culvert and replacing the culvert with a new structure. Um, the, the consultant didn't actually look at widening the bridge, um, which I think we would have to do if we did replace the structure. The estimate that the consultant came up with for replacing the structure was 1.6 million dollars. Um, I asked, um, the folks in rail, uh, yesterday after the TAC meeting, what their estimate would be, uh, for replacing the culvert with a new bridge that would be full bank width, so it would have, um, hydraulic capacity up to today's standards. And they estimated for that between three and five million dollars, plus a 10-day closure of the railroad line, which, um, based on recent experience in Middlebury, we figured would be around 1.5 to 2 million dollars in costs that we would have to pay to the railroad to divert traffic for those few days. Um, so we'd be looking at five to seven million dollars to re, to replace that with a new, um, structure, which would be up to, uh, modern hydraulic standards. Uh, the problem we have, especially with railroad structures, is that they are generally not eligible for FHWA funding. And we don't have a dedicated fund source, federal fund source for, rail structures. So we'd be looking at spending, uh, state dollars on that, which we just don't have at this time. And the consultant projected that this repair that we're gonna do, um, would be good for at least 50 years. So, um, that's the reason we chose to go this route.
Thank you. Question?
Dana from Charlotte.
Go ahead, Dana.
Um, I'm not, I haven't had an update on the TAC meeting, but I understand there were some environmental concerns. Now it's becoming more clear to me that a, the total bridge replacement would be better than the culvert. But are there any lingering concerns about the construction process itself with regard to water quality? Is everyone okay? With all measures, soil erosion, everything, it being done with all respect to the water quality of the brook?
Um, we, we will have to, uh, when we, when we do the work on the, uh, on the culvert, we'll have to take, um, measures necessary to maintain water quality while the work is being done.
Okay, so there aren't any concerns there?
No, not, not from our perspective, no. We have all the tools necessary and we're gonna take all the, uh, measures necessary to maintain water quality.
Okay. I see that Andrea wanted to speak.
Yes, I, I very much appreciate, um, Matt, Matthew's, um, uh, very detailed explanation of what, um, what V Trans recognizes as the situation and the cost of it. Um, just some context is that in the fall of 2019, um, Marty Illick from Lewis Creek Association, because, uh, we had been doing a lot of water quality monitoring and geomorphic assessments, um, you know, all matters related to, um, river science. Um, and it had been identified that this was an undersized structure. And, um, so, and it, and I think V Trans does recognize that it does need to repair these head walls because the embankments are, be, are compromised because it is an undersized structure. So, um, I think it's important that, you know, the, the state, that legislators, that V Trans and the, uh, the legislators understand the condition of our rail, uh, passes, bridges, culverts, that they are 100 years old and are terribly undersized. And that there are more probably, um, situations like this and we need to, um, we need to be addressing it. And, um, you know, as an organization that's concerned with, with bringing us up to modern, using modern river science, I would hope that V Trans and the legislature can find a way to improve these structures, which is why I asked for this, to be an item to all of us to aware of how we're compromising, um, safety on rails. Um, because there, there hasn't been enough attention, I think, to this situation. So I appreciate the situation that V Trans is in and the legislature. And I think we just need to have more awareness of what this long-term situation is on many bridges and culverts related to the railroad.
Well, thank you, Andrea. Any other questions or comments?
Hi Catherine, it's hard, you know, it strikes me, this might be a topic for further discussion at another date. It's striking to me that we spend as much money as we spend on vehicular, motor vehicle improvements, and there's no apparent funding stream for, um, rail improvements. That's kind of a big picture problem rather than just this specific issue, I guess.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? Now, do we need to vote on this tonight? Oh, we do, okay. Are people prepared to, um, approve this tip amendment? If so, we need a motion. So move Barbara Elliott.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, opposed? Abstained? Alright, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, parliamentary inquiry, you ought to make it clear that that was an MPO vote.
Oh, yes, thank you, Jeff. That, that's a, always good reminder. Uh, and so I think only MPO people voted on this, correct? Yeah, alright. Uh, alright, so then-
I sure didn't.
Sorry, Garrett. So then we have six B, which is the, um,
The VP SP two update?
Yes.
And, uh, so indifference, uh, cause we have our guests here from the Creative Discourse Group. I'm just gonna spend 20 seconds on this. Um, you have a memo in your packet, um, that kind of describes what's happening by category. Um, the recommendations coming back from V Trans. Um, and then you have some comments that, uh, we drafted the TAC looked at yesterday. Uh, but this will be an action item for your next meeting on the 20th. We just wanted to kind of give you a preview, let you look at this stuff in advance. Let us know if you have any questions over the next two weeks, um, and that's not an action item, so just, uh, information.
Alright, thank you very much. So, uh, we'll now move on to number four, equity training, uh, with our Creative Discourse, uh, folks. And so I will turn the meeting over to them.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sue McCormick. It's nice to see you all. And we appreciate having this chance to do some work with you. Before we dig into the work, I thought it would be helpful for us to introduce ourselves. So I'm gonna first turn it over to Nadia, uh, my partner in the Creative Discourse Group, to introduce herself and then I'll also do an introduction.
Thank you, Sue. Hi, everyone, and good evening. My name is Nadia Mitchell and I use she and her pronouns. And I am a, um, co-founder with, um, Sue of the Creative Discourse Group. And, um, we have been working with the CCRPC for who knows how long now. It feels like a, a, it's really, it has been, um, nice and long and has gone really well. But we've been working with the CCRPC and we work with other partners in our community, um, advancing racial equity work. We also focus in the areas of justice. We really like to do work around, um, uh, group dialogue and community engagement. And, um, and we've really had a, um, we've had a nice journey with the CCRPC, um, looking at, you're, looking at the organization through an equity audit. And so, um, we're excited to be here today to be, um, to be sharing our one of two learning sessions with you all um, that have come out of some of these early themes that, that we've, um, that we found while doing the equity audit, more on that later. Um, but I, I'm really excited to be here with you all and, um, good evening.
Thank you, Nadia. And I'm Sue McCormick. I live in Essex Junction with my wife. I have two grown daughters who I had the opportunity to raise in Vermont. I feel very lucky about that. And I'm very happy to be in this partnership with Nadia. We are really working to help municipalities and school districts and communities build their capacity to solve their problems with the racial equity lens um, and to find better ways to engage with all of the people they serve. And when this work goes well, some really great things happen. We find that new leadership emerges, new relationships and connections are met, innovations happen that didn't seem to be possible before. And so we're really excited to be engaged in this work with all of you. And I'm just going to share my screen for a moment so that we can just take a look at what we're going to be doing together tonight. And so we're going to start by providing a little bit of context about how we got here and why we're together doing this learning session tonight. We're going to create some space for some personal work. We know that what, when we're working on racism and equity, it's a combination of personal, cultural and policy change that all needs to kind of work together for real change to be possible. We're going to look a little bit at our history and think about how systemic inequities have been kind of baked into the way our country has functioned. And then we're going to do a little introduction and a preview, uh, that will point us towards our second session on October 20th, which is about the legacy of planning decisions and how those decisions have perpetuated inequities. And then we'll do a little closing reflection. So I want to take a moment or two just to set the context. So as Nadia said, we've really enjoyed our work so far with CCRPC. And CCRPC has articulated, and this is from your website, this vision of a healthy, inclusive and prosperous future and a recognition that that won't be possible without addressing systemic racism and inequities. And, uh, working through racial and economic disparities together with municipalities, partner organizations, employers and residents. And so to support CCRPC in this work, we made a beginning by doing a little bit of an audit. This was an internal audit. We've really focused a lot on the organization, the partners that CCRPC has worked with. We had some really great conversations with staff and board members and partners. And one of the things that we found right away is that people in the organization and especially on the staff said, you know, we're really committed to this work, but we're not exactly sure what to do. We're not exactly confident in our ability to have these conversations and we just need to start to learn together about how to move forward. And so, as many of you know, there's going to be a summit on November 6th where we bring community members and municipal leaders together to start working through this. But we felt that from our findings so far, it would be really helpful to have some time for all of you to dig in a little bit to some of these issues. I wanted to just offer a very simple definition of racial equity. And this comes from the National League of Cities. But what we're really talking about here is that we want, we're looking for a situation in our communities where somebody's race or ethnicity doesn't predict somebody's success, right? So we want to be able to look at data that doesn't show a dis, a variation in homeownership or, uh, graduation rates or health outcomes based on race or is, race or is ethnicity. And I also wanted you to notice the last part of this definition. If we look back at our history, when we have been successful at creating greater equity for one group, there are often, um, advantages that really expand beyond that group and benefit all people in the community. And we just wanted to point to a couple of reasons why this work is really urgent right now. And as many of you know, Burlington has recently, uh, and the CDC too, declared that racism is a public health emergency. And there's a lot of complex reasons why, but we can look right here in Vermont and just see some, you know, what we would say are really unacceptable disparities based on race and ethnicity. And this is showing, uh, that a lot of you know, um, it's almost become a cliche to say that COVID has laid bare longstanding inequities, but it really is true. And here's an example. If you are a white person in Vermont, you know, out of 10,000 Vermonters, you know, 330 white people have gotten COVID. That's the rate. If you're a black or African American, it's 855 people. And then if you look at Asian and people of other races, there's just a hugely disproportionate impact on people of color. I just wanted to show this other gap. There's, we could show gaps around a lot of indicators, but since you all work on transportation planning, um, you can see that percentage of households without a vehicle are, there's a really big gap here. Only about 6% of households of white Vermont, people in Vermont are without a vehicle compared to 12% of people of color. And as we know in our rural state, that's a really a hardship. The other reason this is so pressing is because about 80% of the population growth in Vermont or over 80% is among people of color. We're losing population among white people. And we need to create a situation for our economic vitality where people can, people of color who come here can stay and thrive and participate in our civic life and have opportunities. And so that's really important. And we can also see this trend. If we look at young people, uh, who are people of color, 10% of our young people are people of color as opposed to only 3% of older Vermonters. So we know that this trend is here and it's growing and it's actually really going to be helpful for our economic vitality if we can create conditions where, um, we reduce barriers and create opportunities. So everybody who comes here is able to thrive and do well. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen for just a moment. And that's just a little bit about why we're here tonight. We are going to do two sessions tonight. We really are going to be looking a little bit, starting from the personal and just kind of practicing, talking about race and racism. That's something that the staff really said they wanted to do. And then next time we get together, we're going to look a little bit more systemically at, and specifically at planning. And so to get us started, I'm going to turn it over to Nadia.
Thank you, Sue, and you can go ahead and start sharing your screen again. So as Sue mentioned, um, we did hear from, from you all, staff and board, um, that you really are ready and want to be having these conversations. And, um, and you know, the, it, this is not uncommon, right? Like these conversations, when we start talking about race and racism, can be really tricky because like anything that we don't, um, exercise that muscle of conversation, you know, it can be, um, a challenge at times to think about, you know, um, you know, am I saying the right thing? Uh, uh, am I gonna say something that's going to be offensive to someone? How, uh, what, what is that, right, language changes, right? Nadia introduced herself and she said her pronouns, like what's this pronoun thing all about? Like, there are all these shifts and changes in how we think about, um, inclusion and diversity and equity. And so, um, so it can be a little daunting at times. So we, um, heard that loud and clear. And so we want to spend the first little bit of our opening conversation, really just exercising that muscle a little bit, um, that. So we have this segment here that we're gonna share. It's called, it was produced by SNL called Black Jeopardy. And the skit features, um, three contestants, two black women and, um, and a white male, Doug, who's portrayed, but portrayed by the actor Tom Hanks, um, and the host of the show, um, Darnell, who's portrayed by Kenan Thompson. And, um, while watching the video, I want you to just think a little bit about how you're feeling and, um, when, when seeing the engagement amongst the contestants, right? And also think about the sort of body language that you're seeing from the contestants and how you yourself are, how your body is shifting, um, what you're, um, what you're experiencing that you can relate to in the video. You know, if, if something's funny to you, like, you should laugh at that, right? Cause you might be seeing yourself in that, right? It might be discomfort laugh, whatever it is, like engage with this video. Um, and then when we come back after watching it, we'll have a little bit of a conversation. So Sue, you can go ahead and play that whenever you keep ready. Thank you, Sue. So, um, so I am actually really curious to know how, what that was like for you all to engage with that video. Um, what are the things? I think, um, the first thing that I think I want to reiterate is I think the reason why we find this video to be useful in, um, sort of engaging you all and talks about race and racism is because we know it can be hard for white people to talk about race. And you, when you're watching this video, you engage with two black women who are very much, um, in their element and, and, and unapologetically representing themselves and the bits and pieces about their lives. And you have Doug, who's doing very much the same thing. And you can see the interactions between these characters on the show. So I'm, I want to, um, sort of open it up to you all to, um, talk a little bit about, um, Sue, I think you're muted, so I can't hear you.
You just cut out just for a moment, Nadia.
Oh, thank you. So, um, the question is, what did you notice? We're gonna just start with just general, what did you notice?
I think I noticed that they were trying to find commonalities, uh, between Doug and, uh, the other two contestants and, uh, and the MC, uh, Darnell. So I thought that that was a neat little, uh, you know, what would be the right word, conceit, uh, for the skit. So I thought that was a great way to be presenting the humor and finding that those commonalities.
Yep, yeah, it was interesting to see, right? When Doug answered the very first question, um, Darnell was like, oh, my goodness, yes, like, that, yes, that's true, right? We can see that, yeah. Has that ever happened to you? Had you been in a conversation with someone and that you thought maybe there were more differences? And, and then when you realized there were some similarities, it was like, why not so far? We're not so different after.
Well, I, I think that's true for every conversation that you have with every, every, every person. So that, you know, when we find commonalities with anybody, we're feeling better. I, I hope I didn't talk over you. It sounds like the connection gets a little fractured. Uh, but I think I was saying that we enjoy that, we, in every conversation that we have, when we find commonality, suddenly we feel bonded with the individual and we feel like we're sharing a common, um, you know, sense of self. So that, you know, we, we're like, oh, you like, uh, whatever it is, Star Wars or, uh, you know, what have you. You know, or you have frustration with the school system for sure, you know?
Yes.
I have to say-
My internet is unstable, so I'm just letting you all know that I'm a little unstable. I'm getting the, the message on my screen, so I apologize for that if we, if I talk over you at times.
Nadia, you might want to turn off your, uh, video for a little bit and then that way that might help that be a little smoother. So, and I think somebody else was about to speak.
Um, I was, I just had to toss out that I would be really surprised to find commonality with somebody wearing a MAGA hat.
Something that jumped at, this is Wayne Howe, something that jumped out at me, I was a little surprised, was when Tom Hanks' character made a comment about the election. And I realized he felt disenfranchised by the election as well. He thought it was a done deal, done someplace else. And I wasn't expecting to hear that. It just was a, you know, you talk about commonality. You have so many folks of whatever, blacks and, uh, other BIPOC kind of communities uh, feeling disenfranchised. And just in his statement, it just was surprising to me that he, that, that, that they had that in common, just, just noticing that.
Yeah, it's amazing what you can, um, understand and learn when, um, when you get in conversation with, with others.
Someone else?
I'm too shy.
Oh, no, I don't believe that for a second.
Hey, I think we have everybody back, Nadia.
Okay, great. So we've agreed that we're going to keep my camera off. I've moved to a new location, and, and sound is up and down.
Oh, Nadia, it's, it's breaking up again. During, while you were all in the breakout groups, Nadia's sound was coming through perfect. So let's try it, Nadia, and see.
So, it's bad again, Sue will just jump in and...
Nadia, I'm gonna jump in, Nadia, because the sound isn't...
So...
It's sound.
Well, Sue, do you want to just do the prompt? Let's just do that.
Sure, sure. I, we just wanted to hear from a couple of folks in the, if anybody's willing in the full group to share what it was like to be part of that conversation, or you might just want to share an event that you shared with the group and talked about that's really shaped your experience and who you are today.
You had volunteered me to go first, Susan, so I guess I'll jump in.
Okay.
So, we were room nine, it was Marshall Forrest and myself, three white guys from Vermont, but, but Northeast Kingdom, Central Vermont, and, and right here in Wodzinski. And the first question, we all were kind of, I'll say, scratching our heads to figure out when we first, you know, noticed things. And, and, I mean, to me, it was really growing up and seeing stuff on TV. That was really my first introduction to, to race and, and different things like that.
Thanks.
And I don't know what other people, because we had very few families of color in our areas.
Although, Mike, if I could just jump in, because when I first moved up here from New York, I moved up onto the Canadian border. And within the white community, French Canadians were often really discriminated against, put upon, I'm not, I'm not making it exactly equivalent at all. But I'm just saying, if you're looking for kind of an example, maybe a little bit in, in Vermont, when I lived up in Franklin County, in Orleans County and all that, back in the 70s, French Canadians played a little of that role. Was, it was ugly.
So this is far, if you went further back into the 20s to 40s, it was worse than what you experienced or observed?
I would, one of the things I, I told Forrest and Marshall was, my grandparents, my dad's parents, my, my grandfather's full Irish, my grandmother was French Canadian, they got married, and there was a kind of a clash there. And then my dad was Irish Catholic, married a Protestant from Heinsberg, and there was a clash there. So, yeah.
Thanks, Mike. Who else would like to share either an event that they discussed, or a way that your awareness of your own race and ethnicity and other people's race and ethnicity shaped you? Go ahead, Kurt.
So I had the group that had Max Schindler, Pam Brangin, and Charlie Baker. And I related my experience where, much like what Mike said, I didn't have a whole lot of experience growing up in Southern New Hampshire with minority groups, until I moved away after college, and I went to Cincinnati, Ohio to work for Procter &amp; Gamble, and became good friends with a black engineer that lived in the same apartment complex as me. And so we carpooled together and got to know each other pretty well. And so, one day, I saw him at work, and you could just tell by the look on his face that something wasn't right. So I went up to him and said, hey, what's going on, Terrell? And he said, I don't know how to say this. And Terrell's from Memphis, Tennessee. And this was his first experience in Cincinnati, north of the Mason-Dixon line. And he just walked around the corner to see two guys, fellow engineers, that he thought were his friends, talking about him using the N-word, and just, it just blew him away. He, he told me that, you know, when I'm in Memphis, I know who I can trust, and I know who my friends are. I'm above the Mason-Dixon line, and I have no idea. And it, it has lived with me ever since, and has really shaped my life in a fashion that has been probably the most profound one I've had in that sense.
Kurt, could you say a little more about how it's changed you or shaped you, or?
So, again, growing up, you know, other than what we saw in the history books and read, or, you know, we really didn't see a lot back, you know, I'm in my mid-60s. So growing up in the 70s, we just didn't see a lot of that in Southern New Hampshire. It was a pretty white community, if you will. So that was my first real introduction to a situation that was clearly racist, and, and two people carrying on the fashion that would have gotten them fired if Terrell had decided to press further with it, which he didn't. I, I then moved to Vermont shortly after that, and went to work at IBM, and experienced another situation with a black engineer, friend of mine, who at an after-work party, had some guys do things that were clearly racist. And that time, I was there, and I stepped up and told them to knock it off, and, and, you know, get real. And to this day, that, that still sits with me. And I probably wouldn't have done that if it hadn't been for the situation that Terrell had told me about, and how that just, you know, destroyed his day when he ran into those two guys.
Thanks, Dan. I really appreciate you sharing that, and how that was part of a progression that enabled you to take an action when you were confronted with that again later on in your life. Dan, go ahead.
Yeah. So Andy Montroll and I, and Farley, turns out, we all had, all had been in, in the Bethesda, Chevy Chase, Maryland area at one time or another. But at least, speaking for me personally, I had fairly sheltered life in suburbia and all. But I remember at least a formative event for me for learning about race, albeit imperfectly. But it was a big, big deal at the time. Before cable TV was the series Roots. I mean, that was, that was really eye-opening. I think it probably had a lot of impact on a lot of people across the country, because it was, it wasn't just a one-off movie.
Okay, Nadia, I think everybody's back.
Looks like everyone's here. Okay, great. So just want to take a few minutes to sort of debrief and do a large group share about those conversations. What, you know, I think I'm curious to know is, you know, what were the highlights from your, from your conversations in your small groups? And in particular, how... And in particular, highlights that sort of maybe had something, maybe there's some connection to planning for the work that the CCRPC does. Anyone want to jump in? Mike, I know you were first back again.
I got nothing to say. I think that, I think probably, of course, I say I have nothing to say, but I'll always talk, right? I think one of the things that from our group is we're just, we're talking at the end about how there's still a lot of racism out there in different places you go. Even after how many generations of, you know, dealing with this stuff. I'll let someone else jump in now.
Well, I'll say that the planning piece, the, the episode that I picked had to do with, in 2009, a Ku Klux Klan group targeted a black neighborhood because it was too close to a white, a white neighborhood. And, you know, the guys erected a flag, I mean, across, set it on fire with the goal of getting rid of, of the people who lived in that area. So that whites could take over the area.
Did you say 2009?
I said 2009. That's why I picked it. It was in Alabama.
Yeah, I don't, and I was just thinking of reflecting on that story reminds me of a story that's connected to the Clemmons Family Farm and all those of you that know that family farm. But there is a story in their family's history of, I think, the, the, um, the Jack and Lydia Clemmons' parents losing their land. One of their parents, I think, losing their land in a similar manner. So I'll have to go back and look at that, but what you're saying is reminding me of a story that Lydia, we call her Lydia Junior, told once. Might be also accessible, that story on the Clemmons Family Farm website.
Kurt, thanks, Nadia, for that example. And you all can look up the Clemmons Family Farm. There's a lot of history and also current things happening there that are relevant to this conversation. Kurt, it looked like you were about to speak.
I was on mute when I started to speak and so I got walked over. I was just bringing up the point, kind of similar to what Mike was, which is, it just amazes me how much stuff still happens in this current day and age. It's just shocking. You would think that people would recognize that, you know, it's long overdue for racist views and, and the kind of prejudices you see to just go away. And yet, here we are in the 21st century. And if you look at history, I'm really concerned that the 22nd century isn't going to look all that much different. Unless some major changes happen with how people perceive each other. Scary.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Garrett.
Actually, along that same line, traveling with a black friend, I got pulled over for speeding. And I didn't end up getting a ticket. I did get a warning that time. I've gotten plenty of tickets. But anyway, whole thing took the usual, I don't know, eight, 10 minutes, something like that. And this is here in Vermont and I don't remember exactly when, certainly in the last 10 years. And we took off down the road and he just looked at me and said, wow. Didn't that go down differently than if it had been just me in the car? And I looked at him and said, really? And he said, I would have been hauled out of the car, spread eagled over the hood. Might very well have been taken in. That's happened to me many times just for speeding. Anyway, I don't want to belabor it, but just an entirely different situation for, for him here in Vermont. That really depressed me to hear that.
Yeah, I think sharing, this is the sharing of stories and experiences, right? Garrett, you know, I mean, I certainly know plenty of folks with a similar story. I have a friend who's a professor at Plattsford State. He actually documents the outrageous number of times that he's been pulled over. And, you know, he's a professor, he's a chemist, and he, he's very suspicious, apparently. And he gets pulled over. The number, I won't even name the number, but I know that it's remarkably high and, and shocking, right? But, but anyway, so, yep. I think, you know, about hearing this story, we can, we can talk, we can continue to share these stories and it's important that we do. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, someone else is trying to share. Missing someone or is it just some background noise?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, so that I just, I want to sort of, what we do, I think, a lot of times when we hear these stories, we kind of externalize them. And so I appreciate, Garrett, you talking about how that felt because it starts to internalize. And I want to ask that question too. How does it feel to hear these stories? Like, can we internalize what the experience is like for ourselves? And as opposed to sort of saying, oh, I heard this thing, I saw that thing, isn't that terrible? But what does this mean for us as individuals? How are we engaging with this personally? You know, if a person or two would share, that would, you know, that would.
There's a little bit of, we're hearing a little background noise, but would somebody like to share? Kind of, how does it feel to kind of look at the, the aggregate of some of these stories?
I guess I'd jump in with maybe a tangent, maybe it's not related enough. But when, in my work career, which is over, as an elementary school principal, you end up falling in love with three quarters of the kids that you serve. And, you know, when you're seven and eight-year-old, you're kind of naive about how some of the world works. And just over the years to have worked with or been with kids of a different race and, you know, they're having a relatively uneventful early childhood. And it's just a bit sad to know that they're going to be hitting the wall in five years or seven years when middle school or high school rolls around and people start separating into groups. And it's pretty sobering.
Thanks. What, what do people think are the implications of all of this history for the moment that we find ourselves in right now?
I'm going to declare that America is big enough to stand up to this issue and figure it out. This is not anti-American to be thinking about this. This is American. To be working through this stuff and getting back to what our aspirations are. That, that's where we gotta, we can't lose that focus. We've got to have that little piece of hope as we work through this stuff where you just say the hell with it. You can't do it. But, but I want to say if any, if any country is strong enough to do this, blah, blah, blah. But America is strong enough to do this, this work.
Go ahead, Dana, did you want, go ahead, Garrett.
Um, I believe that Wayne is right. America is strong enough to do it. I can't help but feel that the combination of the, well, let me back up a bit. I believe that there are forces more actively fighting it now than, I said actively, now than there were, say, 10 or 15 years ago. Whether those forces being out and in our face and in the news is better or worse, I'm not sure. I mean, you know, the expression, know thine enemy. And as far as I'm concerned, the people who are working against justice are my enemy. But, yeah, I, the thing I don't know is whether or not, I mean, I think we can all agree that a lot of the more racist commentary that goes on has come out into the public domain over the last six, eight years. And that's the thing that I'm wondering about is whether in the long run that's healthy to expose it to sunlight? Or is the large, seemingly large, or at least very loud group of people who feel it's okay to feel that way, is that even more damaging? I don't know the answer to that.
I just want to name quickly, Garrett, that I think what you're noticing is a pattern that because like Nadia said, a lot of us didn't learn about these patterns in, in our history classes when we were in school. But, you know, there have been moments, you know, Reconstruction after the Civil War, the backlash to that, the backlash after the Civil Rights Movement. When we have opportunities where people seem to be becoming more aware of our history and the implications and we're poised to make progress. And that is when people do rise up to try to protect the status quo, right, and prevent progress. So it's not the first time that we found ourselves in this position. It may have, feels different and have some different elements. So I appreciate that. I just also want, go ahead, Nadia.
Oh, go ahead, Sue.
I was also going to say, you know, we had some folks ask us the question when we were talking, you know, why talk about race? You know, it's divisive. And I just want to say that, you know, Isabel Wilkerson wrote a fantastic book called Cast recently. And what she says, and the kind of purpose and intention here is that, you know, the enslavement of Africans and the whole economic system that was built around that, it wasn't a blip in our history, it is our history. It was 400 years, a quarter of millennium, our systems were built on that. And what she says is it's the foundation. And because of the way that foundation was built, you know, our house is in danger. And we cannot go down in the basement and look and close the door, but it doesn't change the fact that the basement, the foundation must be repaired. And so by looking at these inequities and just taking a clear-eyed look, we're, we're going down in the basement. You know, we're, we're being honest about our history. And it's just an important way for us to be thoughtful, smart, and passionate too, I think, for some of us about how we move forward.
Yeah, thank you, Sue. And I think for that, you know, we've, and we're at 7:40, so we're going to wrap up here. I think, Sue, if you want to share something just really quickly. You know, on that note around history, you know, what we want to do in the next, the next time that we come together is really, you know, take a deeper dive into the legacy of racist planning decisions. And so, you know, in order for us to understand the CCRPC's work and to gain some, you know, some general knowledge and insight about the history of inequities, particularly as we think about, you know, issues of land, wealth, privilege, power. It's really going to be important for us to acknowledge that we have some more work to do in terms of digging into that shared history and understand. So to help us think more about this the next time we get together, we're going to share some resources here, including this video that you see on, on the screen that really gives us a short history of housing segregation and redlining in America. And it really helps us draw a line between that history and, and these, sort of the legacy of these racist planning practices and the way in which these practices sort of permeated our society and have continued up until now and the ways in which that has impacted us. And that'll give us an opportunity to then take a look at the CCRPC's planning decisions and practices and really understand how that legacy is playing out even today. And, and start to give us some grounding to really think about, you know, what does this mean? You know, when we're thinking about these issues, you know, what does this mean in terms of, what are the implications for how we do this work now and how we can start to think about new ways to approach our, our planning? So that is what we will be doing next time. We're going to be coming back together on Wednesday, the 20th at 6 o'clock. Or we'll, we'll be joining you at that point. And, and we'll continue this dialogue with, with that, with that conversation about redlining and housing practices. We'll draw a line to all of those other, those other bits and pieces as well. So that, I think with that, we are, we are done our bit today. I don't know if, Sue, you have something else you need to add? Otherwise, at that point, I think I'll turn it back over to Charlie. And I also thank you all very much for sharing with my technology issues. We'll get some hopefully ironed out in the next time so that we can spend a little bit more time looking at me and not my picture. I like that picture, but, you know, I like, have a conversation with you all face to face and you can't see my ear quotes. So thank you all. I hope you all have a great rest of your night. Thank you so much for your contributions in this conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
Appreciate all the, you know, the discussion. Almost feel it's like a come-down and stop, you know, start talking about ordinary stuff. Especially committee member appointments.
Well, we're going to take off then, so you can go ahead and do that if, if there's nothing else. So have a great rest of your night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. We appreciate being with you tonight. We'll see you soon. Bye.
Bye.
Thank you both.
Bye.
That's the truth. It seems kind of mundane to, after these high-level discussions and, you know, feeling dismay and can't believe people still think this way and stuff like that, to, to talk about committee appointments. And we have two different sections that we need to talk about. One is our regional board member appointments. That's an every-two-year per the bylaws and they are appointed by the, you know, by the commission itself. So that will require a motion. And right now we have agriculture as Tom Eaton. Socioeconomic housing is, Justin has moved, so we are looking for a replacement there. Jesse Bridges is still going to stay as the alternate. Tim Backle is going to stay industrial business and Whitney Coombs is the alternate. Don Meals will continue as conservation environmental and Mike Wade is the alternate. And do those meet the approval of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve those, those members.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion, any objections? The motion then passes.
Just a little note for everybody. I am working to get a new socio-econ rep. And so hopefully there's another action coming at a future meeting to fill that seat. And I was also hoping that we had that in-person meeting in September so we could give Justin a good farewell. But we'll do that at some point. We'll drag him back up here. So he was on our board, I think, for, I don't know, 20 years or pretty close to it.
Right, because he started with the RPC before it emerged. And he, you know, he was chair then, over there. Hate to think how long I've been there. So next is our, our regular committee appointments. And I will read what we have. The Finance Committee is the Secretary Treasurer, the Vice Chair and one other board member. So John Zatoni, who's the Chair, Chris Shaw from South Burlington, and then Jeff Carr from Essex. The Board Development Committee is the immediate past Chair, which is Mike O'Brien, Dan Karen from Essex Junction, myself, Jeff Carr, who's been there for a very, very long time. And then there still is a opening for any other commission members or alternates who would be interested in serving on the Board Development. And one of the things And one of the things, you know, what the Board Development does is to, you know, nominate the, the officers for the upcoming year, but based on what we're talking about, if we decide that we need an equity committee, that will go through the Board Development Committee first. So, you know, there is important work to be done there. The UPWP Committee is Chris Shaw, who will be Chair, John Zucconi from Shelburne, Mike Bissonnet from Heinsberg, Jackie Murphy of Colchester. And we still have another opening for a board member there. The TAC has one board member, which is Barbara Elliott. There is a TAC interest group. We had a person to represent disabled for a very short time. So if anybody has any ideas, who could represent the Disabled Committee, the community, please think long and hard about that. But who's on that committee? Pardon? Hear noise. Does someone have something to say? Because I kept hearing...
Yeah, there was some extraneous noise. We muted.
Oh, thank you.
And I apologize, Dana. I'm muting you because we keep hearing some extra noise from you.
Really?
Yes.
So Bob Henneberger is going to represent the elderly, Jonathan Weber represents bike ped, Rail is Mary Ann Michaels, Environmental is Richard Watts, Disabled is open, and then Business is Sam Anderson. Planning Advisory Committee, Wayne Howe from Jericho is the board member. Long Range Planning Committee, there's three to six board members, one of them to be Chair. We have Max Schmidt, oh, sorry, Schindler from... You got glasses, too. Amy Blything from Anuski, Tracy Delphi, Delphia from Essex, Andy Watts, Williston, Dana Hanley from Charlotte. And there is an opening for someone else who is interested in being on the Long Range Planning Commission. That's tasked with writing the new Ecos Plan. Clean Water Advisory has one board member, and that's Don Meals, and Tom Eaton is an alternate. Our Ad Hoc Brownfields Advisory Committee is Kurt Carter from the GBIC, Matt Vaughn, LCBP Vice Chair, is, we have a vacant, there's, from SITO, Heather Carrington from Anuski, Dr. Pavlo, Base UVM. There's a vacancy from UVM, yeah. And then we have Department of Health. Brett Long is the Department of Economic Development. Patricia Capollone, Vermont, the Capollone, the EC, Ex officio, and Marcel Buda, he's the AIA Emeritus. And there is a board member opening there. And then we need someone for the All Hazards Mitigation Plan Update Committee. And our Equity Leadership Team, which has put all this together, is Michael Bryan, Jacqueline Murphy, Elaine Haney, Justin Revidu, and Emma Vaughn, and Brian Davis are staff. So we could, I could just appoint it if everybody's happy with those, or we could have a motion to make those appointments.
Catherine, in the chat, Andy indicated his interest in being on the Board Development Committee. Thank you.
Oh, that's nice. We've always liked Andy there.
Hearing that there's an opening on the Long Range Planning, I'd also like to do that if there's space available.
I think there is. I mean, unless somebody else...